Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, August 25th, 2021, at 7:03 PM. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is roll call.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Aratafrata.
Present.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Maldonado. Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Present.
Alder Wheeler, I know, has been excused. Does anybody know about Alder Maldonado?
I have not heard.
Alder Maldonado? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on. The next order of business, approval of minutes, July 28, 2021, draft minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Gerhart. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next order of business, public appearances for non-agenda items. We do not have anybody in chambers, any registered online. We do not. Thank you. Next item, agenda items. Our first presentation will be from the Madison Metropolitan Sewage District and Chief Engineer and Director, Michael Mucha. Is that correct? Very good. Will be giving us a presentation. If you'll step forward.
It's okay right here?
Very good, yes. Yes, I'll let you take it right from here. And as we have questions, we'll raise our hand or interrupt you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Udell and Alders. I appreciate you carving out time for me today. I'm glad we're in Committee of the Whole because I hope what we can do is have a conversation and I could do, I'm not here just to present, I'm here to listen, and I'm interested in your thoughts and ideas. I'm here to share some really good news and some challenges that we have ahead. Normally, the only time that you may hear from us as an Alder is when I send my rate letter through to the city administrator and it says, well, service charges are going up. And you may not really understand what's behind our service charges, so I thought I'd give you more context to what has been going on and what you can expect from the district in the future, and at least in the six-year future, which is about all we can predict anymore. With climate change and uncertainty, we don't really know what the total future will be, so we have to bring it to you in really good pragmatic ways. I hope that, I know, I've worked in local government now for, this is going to date me, for 35 years, and worked for local government. And Alders have one of the toughest jobs. It's 24 hours a day. And you don't get many thank yous, but I'm sure you get a lot of other comments about issues. And I want wastewater treatment to be an issue that you do not have to worry about, that we have it handled, and that we are working with the Fitchburg staff diligently as we take on important policy issues and look to the future. And Tracy Foss from the staff have been attending our quarterly owner meetings and have been plugged into a lot of the things we've been dealing with over the years. I was a young city engineer in the late 80s, and I worked for a really big growth community called the City of Mecklenburg in the Milwaukee metro area. And at that time, in the mid to late 80s, there was this thing going on called the sewer wars. Have any of you heard about the sewer wars? I'm looking to the side at the people on the screen, too, to see if, shaking heads. Alder Herbst knows about the sewer wars. It was a really dark time for relationships between the Milwaukee Sewage District and the suburban communities, particularly the growth communities. And the fighting was over who pays? Who pays for the system and at what levels? And as a young city engineer, I was spending more time with lawyers than I was with the staff since I was at Mecklenburg at the Sewage District. And so much of taxpayers' money was going to fighting instead of collaborating. And that really made an impression on me at an early age, that as I would grow into positions of more responsibility, I never wanted that to happen. And so one of the most important values I bring to my job every day is that we're stronger together than we are apart. And one of my most important jobs is listening and seeing what you're doing. We have so many owner communities in our Sewage District, and I'll talk a little bit about that. In each of your communities, you have your own priorities, and they're very different. When I meet with the mayor of Madison, their priorities are very different than Fitchburg versus Middleton versus Westport. But somehow, there's this thing called wastewater that's kind of in the middle of it. And we can, by knowing your context, it helps me support you in what you're trying to do. We deliver a essential service. We were created in 1930 for the purpose of collecting money to protect public health and the environment. And there was a philosophy at the time that we could be more effective if we regionalize the treatment plant and that operation. And we're here still today. We started as five communities, and now we include 28 cities, towns, and utility districts in Dane County that go as far south as Lake Kaganza and Stoughton, where Stoughton isn't part of us, and as far north as DeForest, as far west as Middleton, and as far east as Cottage Grove. So we serve about 400,000 people. Our service area is about 180 square miles. And we also serve those who aren't on sewer. And people don't realize that, that if you have a holding tank or a septic system, it's likely pumped out, and all of that comes to the Sewage District, and we charge septic haulers for that waste that comes to us, who then charges people in your rural areas. So we're actually, almost encompass all of Dane County. We're an independent Sewage District, so we're an independent municipal government created by state statute, Chapter 200, and we have nine commissioners that I report to that are appointed and elected by our owners. And I'm going to use the word "owners" instead of "communities" because all of you own the district, and we serve you as owners, you're stakeholders in us. We're not a district over here doing our own thing and just collecting a little bit of money from you here and there, but you really own our operation. And by electing commissioners, they set policy on your behalf, and I deliver on it as the Chief Engineer and Director. Our budget was $64,000 in 1940. I pulled out, and today it's about $44 million. We have 120 staff, all scientists, engineers, skilled trades that do the work, that's 24 hours a day. And as you can imagine, when you're working with wastewater, it never stops coming, regardless of, if you have a pandemic, or, you know, or who's governor or whomever, wastewater keeps coming to us. And it's a dirty job. It could be, and it's a very dangerous job. One of the things I do, I go out and work on a regular basis with the teams and the crews just to see what's going on. And we have these things called, they, oh, well, gosh, wet wells, I'm sorry, wet wells. And a wet well is a, if you go into a hotel lobby and you see it's three, it's about, like, a wet well is about the size of this council chambers. And the purpose of a wet well is it fills up with sewage, raw wastewater, to, let's say, three-quarters of the way up these walls. It triggers an indicator and pumps, pump it down, and then it forces the wastewater over hills to the next gravity point where it could flow downhill again. And eventually, the wastewater from Fitchburg goes like this, because our topography doesn't all flow from, you know, Stoughton all the way down to the sewage plant. Our topography goes up and down. And so we have 18 of these pumping stations, and there's small little buildings on the outside. But if you've ever been in a wet well, it takes about 25 people to clean one. First, we have to shut off the wastewater, and we have to divert the flow, because people don't stop flushing their toilet because we don't want to fill the tank back up. And then, once we divert the flow, which the engineers and operators are doing maybe 15 miles away, then we have to go into hazmat suits and breathing it and crawl through pipes, these greasy pipes, and get to the big cavern to clean them. These caverns are sometimes two to three feet thick with grease and flushable wipes, which are not flushable, by the way. And the job in these caverns is to scrape it all off while you're hip-deep in wastewater and gunk. And so that type of, just that one operation, takes between 20 and 30 people, with safety people on top, people in the pipe, engineers and people moderating all the flow. And I just tell that story because I think we all think that you flush your toilet and it just goes away. And thankfully, you don't have to think about it, because it just, for our owner communities, it does go away. But it's just the hard work that goes into making that happen every day. We have a, we're tackling what I call a $1 billion challenge. It's a billion with a B. And over the last 10 years since I've been the Chief Engineer, and large spending times and large challenges like such as this aren't new to the district. High spending periods have occurred throughout our history. Many times, and up until about the 80s, most of that spending was financed through federal grants after the Clean Water Fund, and most of our work was done pretty easily. We built additions to the treatment plant. They were funded with federal funding, and rates stayed really stable. All that aging infrastructure is coming to term, and we've been really, we have always dealt with it, and now we're dealing with it. So we're, we've, over the last 10 years, we've spent about $140 million on replacing aging infrastructure in the collection system, which is our force mains, our interceptor pipes, which are the big sewer pipes, pumping stations, and at the plant. And a lot of our infrastructure is also going to growth-related projects. So extending larger interceptors out into the growth communities, Fitchburg, you know, DeForest, Westport, there's a lot of growth going up there. And when we build our systems, we have to build it before growth happens. So we're building it sometimes 10, 15, sometimes 20 years ahead of time. And as Alders, you know, when you build capacity, you don't build it for today, you build it for tomorrow. So we're dealing with those types of improvements. The other thing is, we've always been in a regulatory compliance environment, and we've been dealing with increased regulations, and you feel it in your work as well. In the last five years, we have new regulations. We have our first air permit. We have, we're dealing with phosphorus. We're dealing with chloride restrictions. And our air permit is mostly has to do with, we produce renewable energy. So we burn methane gas at the treatment plant, and we turned it into energy, and we operate the treatment plant with it. And we've been doing that since the late 30s. And so that's just one of the products we create. So the regulatory compliance is something. Climate change is something we've been working on. Some of our systems have been in place since the 40s and 50s. Do you think at the time that the engineers and operators even imagined what we're dealing with today with things such as extreme weather? In the last eight years since I've been here, we've had the four highest flow events at the treatment plant in the district's history. And that is significant, because while we think of ourselves as just a wastewater-only facility, water gets into our system when it wants to, through higher groundwater, through surface water getting into manholes, and through leaky pipes. We're learning that household laterals, which are shallow and in some of the aging communities, with willow trees and other things, just are sieves for water. And our treatment plant, after the 2018 storm event, went from 40 million gallons a day coming in to 160 million gallons a day, almost instantaneously, when that rainfall event started happening. Four times the flow. And that took our plant to its absolute limit. And I remember working through the night, that first night, and saying, what are we going to do if we lose power? And we worked to, we have small generators, but not system-wide generators to deal with that storm event. And we had to bring in a generator for pumping station number one, which is our first pumping station on the isthmus of Madison, which was pretty much underwater. It came in on a flatbed truck, large, these aren't small little Honda generators, and took three electricians 12 hours to connect with the cables, were inch and a half in diameter. That's how much power went through this generator to be there should we have it. And so we're very vulnerable to extreme weather, our system, and because a lot of the systems we have in place are not designed to handle four times the flow. Alder Herbst?
That increase, I might correct, the majority of that was due to inflow from the City of Madison. Our interceptors are not that old here, and I think we, I might be correct, I would assume that 80% of that increase came from the City of Madison and probably 80% of that from the isthmus?
Well, you're correct. It came from the isthmus and more from Middleton area.
Oh.
Which really got into Forest, because the storm hit, it didn't hit Fitchburg. And actually, Fitchburg, one of the good news stories is you enjoy what I call a tight sewer system.
We know.
You have very little inflow and infiltration, short I and I. And so what that has meant for you in terms of good news is that your rates have not fluctuated as much as, like, the City of Madison and Middleton, because you are charged based on what you use, on your flows and loadings. So if your flows go up because of extreme weather, you pay a lot more. In some of those communities, their sewer charges for 2018 went up significantly. The City of Manona, for example, their charges doubled because you had the double effect of the Lake Manona and the lakes rising, groundwater rising, leaky pipes. So over months, they were experiencing increased flows that they were paying for because of leaky pipes. So that is, that is one thing that Fitchburg has enjoyed. For some reason, extreme weather doesn't like you. It stays away from your city, and it helps you with your rates. Other questions before I proceed? Alder Herbst?
One more. Is Verona, Verona the only city that sends wastewater to you that is not in the Madison Lakes watershed?
They are. So the City of Verona is not in the Yhara watershed, it's in another watershed.
Sugar River.
That's right. The Badger Mill Creek area.
That's the only, only one in the district.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Looking at the screen at the Alders who are virtual, anything? Not hearing anything.
Just listening.
Just, okay.
And learning a ton.
So to make the, over the last 10 years, to make that $140 million worth of expansion, resiliency, and replacement, service charges increases averaged about 7% increase over that period of time to fund the 140 million. And what we're projecting, and what you can expect from the district over the next six years, is going from 140 million to about $210 million over the next six years. Okay? So we're actually increasing our spending even more than what we've done over the last 10 years. And this will require service charges over the next six years to go up to about 9% increases, which is about $26 more per household for the next six years in addition, over the next six years. Alder Herbst?
Michael, is that, the 210 million, is that both increased capacity and renewal, asset renewal? Or is that just asset renewal, and then, is that just allocated equally by the, you know, the customers, how much flow they have? You know, I assume Madison being 10 times larger than us is paying?
Right. It's everything. It's replacing our heat and power system, our aging system, which is about $50 million. It's complying with our phosphorus regulations, which is $20 million. It's improvements and investments in the collection system to improve capacity, extend interceptor sewers, and it's to deal with redundant infrastructure to handle extreme weather, such as off-grid power supplies at all of our pumping stations in the plant. So it's everything.
There's a question, Michael.
Gabriella. Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thank you. So you mentioned at the beginning that there was, there was a lot of federal funding upfront to help and create this infrastructure. Is there no more federal funding or state funding to help with these updates? Or is the infrastructure bill that's being discussed at the national level, does that have a possibility of supporting sewer infrastructure?
It does have the possibility to our, to our levels. I don't know if it will, but there are no grants anymore to handle the funding. We do have the State Revolving Fund Loan Program called the Clean Water Fund, which we use, that allows us to finance all, most of our big capital at about a 20-year debt service at about 2%.
So if that infrastructure bill comes through in terms of helping to pay for some of the infrastructure updates, would that result in, you know, lowered increased costs over the next, you know, coming, over the coming years?
It would have to be probably hundreds of millions of dollars. A small, you know, $5, $10 million probably wouldn't do that much, but if it was a large amount, it could, it could make a difference in the hundreds of millions of dollars. I'm going to pause there if there are any questions.
I don't see any hands, so.
I did want to say that, you know, there's been a lot of things we have been doing, because I said this was a billion-dollar challenge, and why are we just talking about 200 million today? You may be familiar with watershed adaptive management and dealing with compliance with our new, with our new phosphorus regulations, having to reduce our discharge. And we're working with the City of Fitchburg and all of our other communities in the Yhara watershed to work on land management practices to reduce phosphorus loads, instead of building a bigger treatment plant at $130 million. That, we just signed our new permit last year. We're the first in the state to do that, and nationwide, we're one of the first utilities to go with an adaptive management approach, and it's saving significantly on having to add infrastructure, and it's more environmentally responsible, there's less energy on it. We've done the same thing with chloride. Chloride and salt get into our system through, any guesses how we get chloride?
Water softener.
Water softeners. You know, I lug my 50-pound thing of salt into my house, and in a month, that salt's all gone. It comes to the treatment plant, and we see about 110 tons of chloride a day, which would be 10 of your salt trucks in the winter flow through our treatment plant. And that goes untreated and goes into receiving water bodies. We did a study two years ago to determine how are we going to meet our new compliance limits for chloride. We get some road salt, too, but compared to water softeners, it pales in comparison. And a desalination plant at Nine Springs, with all the hazardous waste we're now dealing with in energy costs, was $500 million. And the EPA and DNR said to us, your citizens can afford that. They did the rate calculation, said, because of your rates, you could afford to raise your rates to somehow fund half a billion dollars worth of infrastructure. We instead went the route of pollution- We instead went the route of, um, of pollution prevention and source reduction, which means we're going to work with the city of Fitchburg, we're gonna work with all of you on how we optimize water softeners and in some cases, not use water softeners. And over time, we can do that at, at a, you know, we're talking millions instead of billions or half a billion dollars over time. And again, that, we don't have the hazardous waste. That, that's what, uh, what I would, I would say is one of the biggest changes in our industry, in the wastewater industry, um, is moving from what I call the big engineering solution. I went to school as a civil engineer to big, to build big infrastructure. That's what I studied for. And, uh, we're finding today, um, that the best solutions aren't if, aren't, aren't hard infrastructure, they're soft infrastructure solutions, um, and behavior change and preventing what goes into the toilet or down the drain in the first place instead of treating it once it gets in. And, uh, we have other looming challenges with PFAS, um, where we, we're going to take a similar approach. Instead of removing PFAS, uh, we're going to be working with the state DNR on how do we reduce PFAS coming into us. So just right there with chloride and phosphorus, we've, uh, we've take a big chunk out of the one billion-dollar challenge already. And now I'm really focusing, our team and our city, uh, our commission is really focused on rehabilitating the treatment plant, uh, which is, is ex, very old and, uh, and needs to be rehabilitated. This last year, it's already been built into your rates. We, we, uh, we replaced our ultraviolet, uh, disinfection system. So the way treatment works, we filter all the bad stuff out, the plastics out, bowling balls, pairs of jeans, two-by-fours that somehow get in our system. And, uh, and then what's left is, that gets through the fine screens are really fine grit. And primary treatment is you take that water and you, you quell it to, or you, you, you calm it to zero velocity and all that sediment filters out. It's like putting some sand in a wa, in your, in your drinking water, shaking it up, it's brown, coming back an hour later, it's on the bottom. You'd be surprised how clean the water is just by doing that visually. And then the nutrients are removed through the second phase process where we, uh, almost like a yeast starter for making bread, we have microorganisms that consume all the, uh, the nutrients. Uh, we add air and bugs and we create this perfect environment, this perfect chemistry where these bugs get very hungry, they eat all the phosphorus and all the nutrients, they get fat and happy, they go to the bottom of the tank. And in the third stage, we scrape all those bugs out and then we, which is called clarification, we have clean water. And then all of those, we push most, most of the bugs to the front of the process to do their work again, to start eating again. And the, the ones that have grown too big, they go and we digest them and create methane gas out of them. Um, and, but the last stage in the process and one very unique to the Sewage District is we disinfect using ultraviolet light. Um, in nineteen eighty-six, we were the first treatment facility to u, to use UV disinfection instead of chlorine because of the hazards of chlorine. And when you use chlorine, you, you chlorinate the water, you kill, you kill the bacteria and then you have a not, need another step in the process to remove the chlorine. We don't have to do that. Uh, that system just came to its, uh, end of its useful life two years ago. We just replaced it, it went online in the fall. So that was built into your rates. We just did that work. Um, and, uh, those are the types of things that are coming to term that we're starting to replace, systems from the eighties and nineties. And so that is what the future looks like going forward. And, um, I, I did wanna pause here and just say that, uh, the sewage charges, you know, nobody likes to pay more for something that's working fine. Um, and, uh, if you've ever done a, a kitchen remodel, it's really expensive, but at the end, it's really exciting because you have granite countertops and better, and you've upgraded. Um, but ten years later, when the refrigerator needs to be replaced, nobody likes to replace the refrigerator. And that's what we're doing. We're replacing our refrigerator and replacing these systems. And that's, that's always really hard to see increases in, in the sewer bills when everything seems to be working just fine. And it is. And it is. And I would say that it's because of the proactive nature of the communities, our owners who have invested in this, uh, into this utility for a long time. So we have not had, uh, to deal with compliance issues because we do have a permit at the end of the day. Um, when I was, uh, a public works director in Reading, Pennsylvania in the nineties, uh, it, it was a city called Reading. Now, all of you know Reading.
Monopoly.
You know, it's on the monopoly board, yes. And, uh, but I'll stop there because I have a question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Alder Gerhart.
Thank you. Uh, I was just wondering if you could remind us that you said that there was gonna be a nine percent increase in, in user costs, about twenty-six dollars per household. Over what time period is that increase gonna happen? Is that just in one year?
It'll be over six years.
Over six years, okay. Thanks.
The thing that, uh, with, uh, Reading and why that's an important story, I was hired as a public works director for the city because they had a, uh, an ammonia violation and they were under a consent order by the EPA. Um, and when, when you get to the point where you're violating your discharge permit, nobody cares. Regulatory agencies do not care how much it costs and it removes all creativity from doing things in a more, uh, watershed or collaborative way. And during the time I was there, I reached agreement, but we had to double our service charges, um, and built a huge treatment plant to get back into compliance over a short period of time. We never wanna get to the point where our discharge does not meet our permit regulations. And that's why we, we always plan ahead by doing facility, facility plans. Um, the work that we're doing now and in the next six years are based on plans. Some of them were developed in, in twenty sixteen. Our liquid processing plan and our collection system plan was last done in twenty thirteen and we've implemented it. Everything that's been in those plans, we've implemented. We funded and implemented. And, uh, that is to stay ahead of regulatory issues and to do things in a way that actually smoothes out increases instead of having major disruptions to you and your, and people in your community over, uh, rates going from here to twenty percent increases or longer-term increases. And so this is gonna be a big investment for us over the next six years. Alder Herbst?
Is the, is the MetroGrow program still in place? Uh, I, it's been a while since I've been by the plant.
I, I will. Um, I'll, 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 I'll explain it and then, uh.
Don't get me, don't let me get you out over there.
No, no, that's a really good thing and, you know, I didn't wanna come in here with too much detail and, and really bore you, so I, I'd rather work from questions. Um, all of our, one of the other byproducts we have is all of our, our solids, because we have liquids and solids. At the end, there are solids that are mostly nutrients. Um, it's a, uh, it's a slurry and, uh, we, uh, we land apply it to farm fields throughout Dane County, um, as, as, instead of, uh, farm producers using, um, uh, purchased fertilizer. It's in high demand, uh, we till it into the soil so it doesn't run off, it's very stable. And that program has been around, uh, since the eighties. Um, and, uh, we're starting to, uh, look, we're diversifying from the liquid program, um, mostly because of the changing environment we're in. Uh, both natural environment and just what's in the water, um, that, uh, we, that people get concerned about. I mean, the, the, uh, the MetroGrow product is completely safe and meets all regulatory standards, but we wanna find a way to have a product that, um, that is a little bit more stable and more of a cake-like product that can be used. Um, because there are, we can only apply, um, this liquid product in the spring before planting and after harvest in the fall. It's a very short window. With the weather patterns changing, that window is closing on us, so we can't get the product out and we can't keep it. And our alternative is to landfill it at huge costs. Um, and so we're really working on differs, diversifying with a, with a cake, a, a Class B product, um, and transitioning our operation over the next ten years to more of, of a Class B product instead of, uh, a slurry product. And, uh, that, that's another sixty million dollar project, that, that transition, that's out of our six-year planning horizon, um, that we know is coming. The, our commission just approved our, our, uh, our plan, uh, about a month ago. Um, and now we're gonna be doing this for ten, fifteen years. That's, say we're slow, and, uh, and we are, but we are planning ahead, um, to, to make that come, to be able to diversify when, uh, weather conditions are such that, uh, we don't have those, those, those hip seasons anymore. And a lot of our farm fields are, uh, are turning into developments. So we're having to truck our material further and further out every year, um, and it's increasing our costs, um, diesel fuel and time and personnel. So we need to find a more cost-effective option and that was what we looked at with the bio solids. Sorry for the long answer to that question.
That's a good answer, thank you.
Yep, we, question, Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm, I'm relatively new, Alder, I'm in my second year and so I'm, you know, still learning a lot about this infrastructure. So in, in terms of, you know, my understanding is that we own and repair and replace all of this wastewater infrastructure within our city limits. So I know we recently installed a lift station over in our TeraVasa neighborhood, which is a new neighborhood. Um, and I know we replace pipes, it's part of our, I believe it's part of our CIP process. So in terms of the infrastructure you're talking about, this is the regional infrastructure and the actual treatment infrastructure? Um, or is it actually part of the, of the infrastructure that's, that's within the city itself? Is there something, like, what is the division of infrastructure responsibility between the city and, and the, um, MMSD?
That, that's good. There are, the, the local sewers, uh, which are, um, in your neighborhoods, um, are owned and operated by the city of Fitchburg. And those, those syst, all of those, your neighborhoods and subdivisions eventually drain into an interceptor sewer, which is a large pipe, usually about thirty-six inches in diameter or larger. And it's a, it's a backbone system. And then we collect all of the neighborhoods and then, you know, on Fitchburg, on, on the way we collect from the city of Madison and that all that flow comes to us. So, uh, what we manage is a hundred and sixty miles of interceptor sewer and force main and one, uh, one treatment plant at Nine Springs and, uh, and eighteen pumping stations throughout the collection system, um, that, uh, that pump it over the hills and valleys and through the valleys.
Can I just follow up real quick?
Go ahead.
Is it possible for us to come to, for a tour of the facility? Is that something that you offer or something we can arrange?
They've been a little slow with COVID right now, um, but we do offer tours. Um, and, uh, your city administrator is also would like a tour and, uh, first Fitchburg city administrator to ask for a tour, thank you.
One of those wells.
And he, he hasn't asked me to come to a wet well yet.
I'm sure the mayor would appreciate that, uh, bill for the Hy-Vac suit or Ty-Vac suit and the workers' comp claim.
And, uh, we do do tours and, um, and we, we welcome you to come out. Uh, you can, you can go online to actually sign up for one and then we'll, we'll have our staff and, uh, depending what type of a tour you want, um, you can have a really engineering technical one or the one we like to give is just talking about all of our resource recovery efforts, how the treatment process, process works and maybe even get into a few tunnels if you want a hard hat tour. We have a lot of tunnels where a lot of interesting things are to see below ground. Um, and it's a real fun tour. And, uh, so if you're interested, um, one of my, one of, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just, uh, I have to take a, a diversion. One of my favorite tours is we had a group from, uh, some, uh, grad students from China come and, uh, and we gave them PPE, we gave them hard hats, glasses, e, the little foam things for the ear and, uh, and we started taking them on the tour and, uh, I looked back and they were all laughing and they had all those foam things in their noses because it smelled so bad at one point. So, uh, I don't know if it was a sense of humor or what, but they were all laughing, so, uh.
Yes, any, any additional questions?
I, I'm sorry, I have one. So what is your, your supply, your electrical supply? My concern is a, a pan, pandemic-type thing, you know, like we had similar except worse, where people are confined to the homes. And we have the capability in Fitchburg to keep water to our homes, okay? So you have, if people can keep, if we can keep water, pump up our wells, people can stay in their homes until they run out of food, which can be a relatively long amount of time. What's your, what's, how much storage do you have there or do you have, what's your contingency plan on a regional blackout? Do you have your own black star generator? Um, can you elaborate on that at all for me?
Uh, I do. Um, we, um, we've done, one of the things we've done well is when storms hit, they, maybe you can elaborate more on, on a COVID scenario that might take out everything. Um, but, uh, and that's a whole other story about how scared we were about COVID. Um, and, uh, but in terms of losing power generation, thankfully and luckily, storms don't hit the whole colony at the same time. So we have enough, uh, electrical, portable electrical generation to get through, um, some of those periods. Um, and, uh, we, we've put, um, uh, redundant infrastructure in place. And so instead of generating, uh, if we lose power, instead of creating generation, can we divert that flow to another part of the system?
What's your stor, how much storage do you, how much storage capacity?
No, no storage.
No, not, used to have storage.
Not, not for, not for, uh, not for raw wastewater. Uh, we do have storage for treated wastewater, treated effluent. And, uh, we have, um, so treated effluent would be very clean water that's going directly to, uh, Badfish Creek and Badger Mill Creek, our, our two discharge points. Our restriction is always in the force mains pumping clean water back to the stream. That's our, that's our, our choke point. And so, uh, during the twenty eighteen storm events, we could treat it. We could convey it, most of it through the system or all of it, um, except in a small area of Middleton, um, but we couldn't get it out fast enough. Um, right next to our treatment plant, we have, uh, some of you may have visited a wildlife observation area. It's about a hundred and fifty acres of ponds, it's beautiful. It's, uh, a place for migratory boards, birds, um, and it's a former superfund site of where we used to dry, it used to be our drying beds. And it's a former Superfund site of where we used to dry, it used to be our drying beds for where we would dry sludge. And so they're capped. And in times where we can't pump it out, we take our, our treated effluent. We pump it to the, we, to these, all these ponds. We can store it there. We probably have enough storage. I don't recall exactly, probably two, two days of storage to get us through peak flow event. And that's exactly what happened in 2018. We stored clean effluent. And then we brought that clean effluent back around to the full treatment process from headworks all the way through again when the flows went down. So that's our, that's our resiliency. That's what we, what part of our natural solution is using those beautiful wildlife ponds for that purpose.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions? No, nothing. There's no additional questions. Anything that you'd like to say to, to wrap things up or?
I do. I, I think that we will continue to take a long-term view and continue to involve you as owners in the discussion. The plans we have are, your staff have been involved in development of our I and I reduction plan along the way. And we have quarterly owner meetings where we talk about our finances. We talk about projects and, and, and we talk about how do we work together on what priorities you'd like us to look at. And those are really, those are meetings more for listening than us talking at our owners. So I hope that Chad has indicated the desire, you know, saying it on the record. So love to have you come and be part of those conversations because I think it's, it's important. So welcome, and any Alders or the mayor could attend at any time.
Very good, very good. Any, any last question? Well, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. You've been very informative and we, we do, we appreciate your time and thank you again.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You do the same. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Our next agenda item is the basics of assessing. And our city assessor, Amy Mercer, will provide a presentation and questions. Or answers to the questions, I should say. Amy, go ahead.
Okay. I have a quiet voice, so I'll try and talk a little bit louder through the mask. Okay. All right. So I put together a presentation today. As long as I can get this to work. It always works different with three screens in front of me in my office versus here, so. All right. So I'm going to talk about just kind of the basics of assessing. I think it should take about 20 minutes or so. However you prefer to handle it, if you want to ask questions in between, I'm perfectly fine with that. And I can jump around to other screens if you want. Otherwise, I can go through the main presentation and then go back to other screens at the end.
I hear, I see shaking of heads. All right, all right. We'll hold our questions till the end.
All right. See if I can find where I have my. Sorry, I'm trying to find my, uh, my screens. Okay, works a little different in here. All right, so our assessment, first I'll talk a little bit about our, our team. So I'm the city assessor. I've been the city assessor for about two and a half years now. And I've worked here for five years. We have our commercial appraiser, Bart Taylor. So he just started here in May, the end of May. We have a residential appraiser, Nick Hare. And Nick will be leaving September 1st. That's his last day. So we're currently recruiting for that position. And then we have a property appraiser, Dwight Frame. And so the four of us, we basically are set to the task of setting all values on real and personal property each year. The city of Pittsburgh, we tend to revalue every year. This last year for 2021 was what we call a maintenance assessment year. So a revaluation is when we take all of the assessments and we pull those up to full market value. And a maintenance year is when we do the exact same work as a revaluation. We still review sales, permits, we still have to do all that basic work. We just don't apply like a market adjustment. So, so assessment, if you did nothing on your property that year to change it by adding a deck or basement finish, then your assessment would stay the same as the prior year. But if you added a deck, then that base value for that deck would get added to that prior assessment. And those would be the type of changes. So then. So when we value, we value all real and personal property. So your real estate has eight classes. You have residential, that's your homes that you live in, things of that nature. Commercial are all the businesses within our community. Manufacturing properties, those are assessed actually by the state of Wisconsin. And then we have our, what I refer to as our acre-based classes. Agricultural land, that's your tillable crops. Undeveloped land, that's, that's the land like swamp and waste or road right of way. And then we have ag forest. That would be the forested land on agricultural properties. And then productive forest would not be adjacent to ag property. So that would be forest, that would be like adjacent to a residential lot or something like that. And other is what we, is referred to as like your ag or home site. So that's the actual farm site, the buildings that are adjacent to the ag land. And then you have some exempt real estate. So like city hall is exempt, schools, churches, those fall under the exempt real estate properties. And then you have personal property. And so the personal property isn't, it isn't like the beds in your houses or your kitchen table. That is not taxable. Personal property is business personal property. So it's the, it's the, like in a hair salon, it would be the chairs you sit in or their little workstations, the desks, the, those items. So that's what we're responsible to value each year. And so the assessment process consists of three actions. We discover and then we list what we discover and then we have to value that property. We discover items through building permits. We review all sales. We are required to review all agricultural properties every year because agricultural properties get special. They're valued not at full market, but as, based on an income. So they get special treatment on those properties. We also discover things during open book when property owners bring things to our attention. So we always encourage property owners to participate in our process. We'll find things through queries and then we'll do periodic reviews. So we might pick an entire neighborhood, an entire apartment complex, those type of things to review and make sure everything is equitable. And then after we know what we need to go view, then we have to go and view that property and list or collect that data. We'll do that by requesting to do full inspections to view the interior and exterior. We'll measure buildings. Then we have to sketch those and we now would sketch those electronically right within our Kama system. And we have the majority drawn. We have about 2,000 real estate parcels to go on residential, but we've made a good, gotten the majority in there. We'll list all the room counts, basement finish, those type of things. Sales, all real estate sales that occur, we'll have to enter those onto our data. Building permits and of course, notes are one of the most important things that we do is good note-taking so that we can defend those values. This is just a little chart kind of showing what we get into. We get into close to about 70% of all the properties we request to view. And then we end up estimating about 30%. This might be a little skewed because of COVID. Last year, we did a lot of Zoom inspections due to COVID. So instead of walking through the properties during these times, we also offered Zoom inspections where people walked through their homes with their smartphones or their tablet and literally showed us their house with electronically. Wanted to keep the public safe and my staff safe at the same time. So once we collect that data, we enter it all into a Kama system. And a Kama stands for computer-aided mass appraisal. It's a very extensive computerized program where we put all of that data in. And then within that Kama system, we have basic cost tables that are in the setup. And we, we refer to that as modeling. So residential and agricultural properties use the Wisconsin Property Assessment Manual, Volume Two. And the state sets all of those cost tables. And then we also, for commercial, we use Marshall and Swift Cost Estimator. And then we take those base costs, like residential and ag properties. We actually value those on a sales-modified cost approach. So everyone is equitable using that same cost tables. And then we apply market adjustments based on different neighborhoods who alter those. We might find one neighborhood is selling 7% higher than those base prices. Another might be selling 2% lower. One might be 10% higher. So then we can apply a modifier to that cost to bring that neighborhood in with what those sales are showing us. So then we have three approaches to value. And so there's a sales approach, a cost approach, and an income approach. So residential and ag, we tend to use cost. Like I said, a sales-modified cost approach. And on commercial properties, we typically value using an income approach. We still have to use the cost approach and, and list everything. And basically you, all three approaches kind of reconcile. So if you do all three approaches to valuing that property, they all interrelate. And I don't think a lot of people understand that sometimes, but you, you need to look at sales. There is a court case, which is referred to as the Markarian hierarchy. And that, that court case actually says to prioritize. So a recent sale of the subject property is the best indicator of value, if it's arms-length. And then if there's no recent sale of the subject, then you go to reasonably comparable properties. And you say, okay, these sales are coming in here. Your property is just like this. Your property should be valued at this amount. And then if you have no reasonable comparable sales, then you tend to go to income and cost. Commercial properties, that's why we use income because we don't always have a whole lot of sales to utilize or make those adjustments. We use a lot of internet tools when we value properties. We'll use Access Dane and the D C I map on there. We'll use Google Maps or Satellite Views. Especially on ag properties, we'll measure out a 40-acre parcel and we'll measure out the area using the map as to the area that's tillable versus the area that might be swamp, the acres aligned for your residential, your commercial property or residential property, whatever that is. On sales, when we don't get in and we can't talk to the property owner about sales, then we'll Google and I'll just type in the address and put for sale. And a lot of times you can find those listings. We now have CoStar for commercial properties and that's really beneficial to show us where those sales are or leases, all of that. We can really find some good comps that way and things. We have other state agencies like traffic count maps, storage tanks. So on like our gas stations, all of the gas pumps underneath, those are all itemized in there. So we go out and we find what tanks and the amount of, you know, if it's 20 gallons or 20,000, 80,000, whatever those tanks are on that site, then we have to list those tanks for that appropriate site. And then the Department of Revenue, that site, especially for like sales and things like that. That's a good site for property owners too, because there's a public way of searching all of the sales out. And so we often refer property owners to the public site to see. We have a, what we call PAD system where assessors can log in and then we can see a little bit more. But that confidential information is redacted in the public site. And so this screen just kind of talks a little bit more about Department of Revenue sites, what you can all find. You can search the sales on the E R, E R E T R. That stands for Electronic Real Estate Transfer Returns. They have a lot of frequently asked questions on their website for property owners. They create guides every year for property owners. The guide for property owners, which talks about your appeal rights and what the assessors to do. Here in our jurisdiction, the 2021 Ag Assessment Guide, that's really nice for the agricultural property owners to understand ag use and how that applies, conversion charges, all of that that we are required to do. And the Department of Revenue, the, the division that we work the most with is state and local finance. And there's four bureaus in that. The Madison office has L G S. And that's kind of what our clerks and treasurers work most closely with, that bureau. O T A S, that is where assessors get certified. They create the manuals, T I Ds, all of that works through them. They do their fog bug tickets, anything that we have to correspond electronically. We push our sales out, they collect those sales and come back. And then equalization, they equate all of the values. So when we send our sales to the state, they take that information and they look at it and they basically then equate between each jurisdiction. So Pittsburgh might revalue this year, but the town of Dunn might not. They might be at 80% of fair market value. So equalization takes those and equates that. So then on your tax bills, you know, we're not paying 20% more to the same school district. They equate everything, pull it up to 100% for all jurisdictions. And then they balance that out for your tax bills. And then you have Manufacturing and Utility Bureau. So if you ever look at my budget, one of my largest items on my budget is the manufacturing fee. So we actually pay the state for valuing those manufacturing properties. And then the Utility Bureau, that's for utilities. So like this year with the solar farm, solar project. I worked with the Utility Bureau and their bureau director to, to work through that process. Their standard, standard process that if they don't fill out certain forms, then they're valued as commercial. And if they qualify and fill out these certain forms, then they might qualify for exempt. So after much, a lot of legwork, we eventually got that valued appropriate with the correct information. And then there's Access Dane, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with. But that has a lot of information. Our assessments are pushed out. So we work very closely with Dane County, real property listers to all of the splits, all of the new parcel numbers they'll assign. Their DCI maps, working with addresses, things like that on their website. And some people aren't aware, but on their site, you can look at past tax bills. You can look at, actually get a receipt. So if you pay your bill, you can go out and have a receipt if you do your taxes later on. And then the city of Fitchburg's website, we have a lot of information that we post on our website. We list all of our important dates like border review and open book. We talk about what we do. We've been looking, listing our sale books for the last three years. So we can actually create a sale book of all the valid sales each year. So property owners can review that during that open book period, just to see what homes are selling for. There's lots of quick links. So all of the other websites, we have quick links to like Assessor Data, Access Dane, DOR, all of those out there. And then our contact information always. I also post our picture, a picture out there so that they can have an idea of what we look like before we come to their property. And then there's Assessor Data. So we pay an additional fee to use so property owners can view like all of their data. When I started here a few years ago, it was just absolute basic, like the square footage and that's it. Now, if you work your way through the site, you can now see like your actual sketch, your photo, all the data. Names are redacted, so your names are not on Assessor Data. It's just that basic assessment and basic information that is out there. But that's really nice for realtors, listing agents. This is just a, one page of the record card from Assessor Data. So you can see like the names are redacted and just the basic information on there. We're required to review all sales every year. So I'm expecting about 1,200 sales this year again. That we have to validate and review and then report to the Department of Revenue. This is, this, here is some stats and I don't know if you can see it. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit. So this is a report that the state creates. So when we push our sales out to the state, then they do their magic on their side. And so this, hope I can move it around. But you have your major classes, which we consider residential and commercial qualifies in the state of Wisconsin. So this is the number of sales that we had listed last year. And I say last year during 2020, leading up to 1-1 of 2021. So we had this many valid, 427 valid residential sales. So what they do here is they're taking the total assessed value for all of those sales. And they divide it by that total sale price. And they're giving us our aggregate ratios there. So that's showing us that we're about 5%, 6% light because we didn't revalue that last year. And then your mean and your median. So these are all our statistics that we work through. And then these end, the C O, C O D and C O C and P R D, those are our statistics. So our P R D, this column ideally would be one. Coefficient of dispersion. Anything that's 0 to 15% is considered excellent. So we're doing our job here. Anything that's 85 to 100% is considered excellent. So we're, we've got good stats here. We do a lot of stratifying because our community is so different. So we have a lot of different neighborhoods. You know, when I worked in Janesville, I think we had eight neighborhoods. Here, I think we're over 100 neighborhoods. So we actually stratify much smaller. And then we put those neighborhoods into larger neighborhood groups. So if you don't have a whole lot of sales in that neighborhood, then we go out to that neighborhood group. But that just kind of helps us, you know, set those values more appropriately. I'm trying to get out of here, so I'm sorry. It's not, I'm having technical difficulty here. It's not going to my next slide, so sorry. Anybody good with this? Exit it altogether? There we go. Yep. Got it back.
We'll move it back and forth then. Oh yeah, there you go.
Now it does, yep. Thank you. And then we just have a, again, we just are talking about a few more internet sites of how we search out sales, listings, different tools that we continue to use. We get into about 70% and those that we don't get into, a lot of people say, well, how do you set those values? Well, then we have to estimate those properties and we use the best information available. So again, our process is to send a letter to the property owners asking to view it. We hear back from about 43% of those property owners from that initial letter. Then that other 57%, we go out and what we call tag. So after a couple of weeks, then we go out in the field, we'll knock on the doors, ask that property owner if we can view it. They're not always home, but we get into about one out of four. So that adds to that. And then we leave a little tag. We're required by law to tag that property. And then about one out of those four that we were out to will call back. So we end up getting into about 70% and estimating 30. Estimating takes a lot more time than actually getting in. So these are some of the things we'll do. We'll search out those sales and look for photos, things of that nature. We'll talk with building inspection to find out how far along, what they've, you know, how far along that property is, if it was complete or wasn't complete, those type of things. Or we can measure the exterior if it's, if we're allowed to. So our work is actually mandated by the state statutes. And so chapter 70, 73 and 74 are the primary chapters that really tell us what, how we have to do our work. And, and I don't remember which statute is, but one of the statutes then refers to the Department of Revenue and, and how they tell us to do it. So that leads us then to the Department of Revenue and, and following their processes and their procedures that they put in the Wisconsin Property Assessment Manual. Tax bills. You know, Misty, this is her end, not mine, but a lot of people question us about it. So our assessment is one part in the formula for your tax bill. The assessor's office just sets the assessment. We don't do the taxes and that. But a lot of property owners often think the city collects all of that money. And so when we're out there, we'll explain that to the property owners. No, look at your tax bill. You're paying part of that tax is going to your school district, part to the county, part to the city, Madison Tech College, et cetera. So we, we try to explain that lottery credits, those type of things. Misty had created a video explaining more about tax bills and how they're calculated. So we actually have that on our website also under the assessing. So property owners can understand that aspect of it. And then after we set all of those values, then we begin our appeal process. So we send out our open, our change notices typically in the spring. We try to get those out. Ideally, it should be around mid-April. But we've discovered a lot of things the last couple of years, so we're not always on track with that. So this year, open book was from May 14th through May 20th. Usually when we revalue, it overlaps a three week period that we have that. This year it was shorter because it was a maintenance year. And so we have less customers wanting to talk to us. We are required by law to, between the end of open book and sending out those notices and border review. In a maintenance year, we have to allow 15 days in between. And in a revaluation, it's 30 days. So we always have to calculate how long that will run. Open book is the informal appeal process. That's where we can sit down with property owners and talk to them about their values, still collect data and still work through that and perfect that assessment role. The border review, at that point, I turn over the assessment roles to our clerk. And I'll sign the affidavit saying that assessment role is perfected for the year. And at that point, I become the defendant. And the, the board is ran by the border review. It's a quasi judicial process. And the clerk schedules those meetings and, and is to handle that part of it. If at the end of border review, property owners still disagree with their value, then they have additional appeal processes. And so they can appeal to circuit court. If the property is under a million dollars, they can also go to the Department of Revenue. They pay a hundred dollar fee and ask the Department of Revenue to review that assessment. And it's handled almost the same as border review. Just different people listening to the case. And then, we always kind of talk to property owners about their next steps. You know, we encourage them to always review their assessment notice. Ask themselves, you know, does it seem fair and equitable? Did they purchase their property recently? If so, you know, does our assessment come in line with their purchase price? Would you sell your property for that amount? Have you had a recent appraisal and is our value close to that? We always want property owners to review their property record cards because the data listed is what basically generates your value. And if you have questions, always contact us. And depending on the time of the year, we have different processes to deal with that assessed value. And we always try, strive to assure that all properties in the city are valued fairly and equitably by law. We really do appreciate people participating in the process because it's a two-way street. You know, we can't do our job without all of the citizens, the property owners doing theirs. And always contact us with any questions. So that's kind of the PowerPoint. I don't know if anyone has questions or if you want me to go through any of those other links or show you how Market Drive works. I can do that also. So that's up to.
Do we have questions? Yes, Alder Rodder-Frod, you have the floor.
Okay, so I, I have two question. So what is going to happen with the personal property tax? I seen that there was a bill to, I don't know, it was in the Evers budget. Was, I don't know, I don't know if they remove it. I didn't follow that part. But it was, I think it's going to be, the personal property taxes is going to be, you know, removed from 2022?
Well, they originally proposed that, that it would be removed. It did not pass. He did send it back and basically stated why he was not passing it. I believe, as I understand it, it had to do primarily with utility companies. That they're taxed in a different manner slightly. And it didn't cover that in this bill. So I don't think it's dead, but I think it needs to be reworked for certain items that were not covered. Otherwise they would be, you know, they consider themselves unlawfully taxed because they would be taxed and others would not be. So I believe that's where it stands right now. It has not been passed. But I do know that they've been talking about eliminating it for as long as I can ever remember and it's never gone through. So I will be more than happy when it does. I did crunch a few numbers here because I had read somewhere that, oh, it won't make that much of a difference. But it will make a difference to the residential property owners. I can tell you that much there. You know, I ran some numbers and it would increase what their proportionment would be quite a bit, actually.
Can I follow up?
Yes, go ahead.
Because I, you know, part of my job, I was in charge of the personal property tax for many years. So, and what I noticed from many, many years that the, the government is removing some of their schedule. You know what I mean? It's exempting more and more and more. So, and I think it was, it was supposed that the state of Wisconsin went to reimburse the municipality for, you know, for the money that they cannot collect. So it's going to continue being the plan when they eliminate the personal property tax, that's it. We are not going to receive any aid or any reimbursement for the revenue that we are going to, we are, we are not going to receive.
I think that was one of the issues too that I read because I believe it talked about reimbursing us for one or two years and then it would be done. So that's when that would shift a lot more to the other classes of property, the real estate. And primarily the residential. I was, I was actually surprised when I, I did some numbers at what it would actually affect it. You know, I, it's not my favorite item to do. And I don't think it's a favorite item for many assessors to list. It's very time consuming to data enter that in and that, but that's not necessarily the reason to eliminate it, I guess, so.
Okay. Yes, Alder Herbst, go ahead.
Strictly hypothetical, there was a successful unlicensed business being operated out of a home in my neighborhood. I'm not against home businesses, but it was disrupting, disrupting traffic and things like that. Do you have, would you, would you be, would you go and chart and, and personal property, property in there? Would you tax that or look at the income from that, that business? Okay, and strictly hypothetical.
Nope, nope. We do have a few property owners that work out of their homes. And they do have personal property accounts. It's harder to find those personal property accounts. So in most cases, they actually contact us and, and they're very honest about that they're running that business out of their home. But that's part of that whole discovery process that we cannot, we, it's hard to discover the personal property. Our biggest indicator is the actual commercial real estate. And our Kama system is pretty cool where this program that if you have all of the addresses in, let's say a strip mall, and you have those personal property accounts in, we link, they link back and forth. So I can be in the commercial parcel, click on the occupants tab, and it will list all of the occupants there that have personal property accounts. And then I can click on a little button and that'll actually take me into that personal property. So on our personal property forms, we can also ask those owners if they'll share with us their lease information and things like that, because we don't always get it from the commercial property owners. So if they share that on there, that'll actually pull through. And then we can see what they're actually getting for leases also on that commercial property. So that helps us then value that commercial property.
Thank you.
So.
I have a question, just circling back to your presentation as far as assessing. You had mentioned about manufactured. You do, you do assess manufacturing or is that left up to the state itself? Clarify that?
Yep, the state, so for someone to be classified as manufacturing, they have to fill out a form with the Department of Revenue and qualify for that. So we don't decide, the local assessor doesn't decide. If it becomes manufacturing, the state decides if they take that. And then they'll send us a letter saying they're And then they'll send us a letter saying they're taking that property or they're giving it back to us. So then the state values that if they classify it as manufacturing and we do not. So there are properties here like the, the new Promega and Sub-Zero. Okay, so that will, I believe, become manufacturing if they apply for that. But it's been a partial the last two years, and the state won't take the property if it's under construction. It has to be manufacturing something is their current, is what I've been currently told. So the last two years, that has been on our local roll and is valued as commercial. And then this year, when it's, I presume it'll be complete, I haven't quite looked at that yet, but it will be up to them if they file and request for manufacturing status or do not request that. So there are a couple of businesses that I believe probably would qualify as manufacturing, but it's up to those property owners to request that manufacturing status. And then the state makes that decision if it becomes manufacturing or not.
I'm assuming there's some advantage to, from their, their side?
I tend to find that manufacturing is lower than what I would put that value at it.
Right, right, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I follow up with that?
Yes, you may, you have the floor.
So, yeah, because this is what I do believe. Manufacturing company, they, they usually apply for to be, to be considered a manufacturing company because Wisconsin has the manufacturing credit for income tax purpose. So that one is kind of if you are a manufacturing and you, you, you have access to the income tax credit, practically you don't pay income taxes in Wisconsin. So that one is a big incentive for companies that they are considered manufacturing to apply and being considered a manufacturer so they can, you know, have that income tax, you know, credit. So the other thing with manufacturing companies that most of the equipment that they are, you know, because you have the manufacturing, then inside the manufacturing, you have this very expensive equipment, most of these expensive equipment, they are, they are exempt if they are part of the processing of some specific, you know, product that they are developing. So some, I would say, you know, there is a huge amount of equipment that they are tax exempt plus all the computer equipment that is tax exempt, but part some vehicle or truck that are exempt. So practically, you know, the, the personal property taxes that the manufacturing companies is, you know, is completely, is reduced. So my other question, Amy, is... I have a, I have a couple of residents, they asked me the question and I didn't know how to answer. So solar farms, you know, I mean, how they are, how do you assess that and how much property taxes do they pay?
Okay, so the, the solar project, and I'm going to start taking the word farm out of it.
Okay, yeah, the solar project, yeah.
No, 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 just because we've always, we've been referring to it as a solar farm. But a lot of people thought that, that would still meet egg use, and it, as far as assessing goes, it does not. Those are, that's a utility company. And because they filled out, there's this UT, I can't remember the number, but UT form. And there's different forms. If they file and they're part of the PFC, then, and they've included that with their numbers, then they're actually exempt. So all of those acres where those solar panels are, are considered exempt right now. The area where the farm site is still and they're still cropping, that is being assessed. So there are a couple parcels that are part exempt and part taxable. So on the west side of the road where you have the farm site there and the solar panels, that's part taxable and part assessable, or part taxable and part exempt. And so we worked with the state through that because initially I had valued that as commercial because they did not turn in a lease to me, they did not turn in the UT form to myself or the state. So they have to turn in that form to qualify for an exemption. And it isn't the same exemption form that you would file, let's say if you're a daycare. You know, if, because it's a utility company and they already qualify in certain ways, then that became exempt as a utility. They pay tax in a different way, and that tax will come back in a different manner to the city. But everyone I've asked so far, I haven't heard any concrete numbers as to how that quite is calculated. So that calculation might be a little bit of a mystery right now. So what will come back to the city?
And Amy, I'm guessing because it's a utility as a city, we really can't do anything to prevent that from being tax exempt or anything. I just, I just know that I've heard rumblings of other solar projects, and I'm just wondering what's the impact if we have hundreds and hundreds of solar farms, which is, is great for other reasons, but in terms of city finances, that, that is a concern, obviously.
Correct.
I know there are more that are at least being talked about.
Correct.
Because, can I, can I ask another question follow up that? Can I ask? Because those, those, my question is, following the mayor thought is, you know, some of those land were paying, those parcel that they are before, you know, used for farm, for crops, they, they pay property taxes. But then when we convert it to, to solar projects, you know, to a solar parcel, so practically they are exempt paying taxes. The area where the solar panel are installed, they are exempt. So I think that one is, is good to know how much is going to be that economic impact in our revenues if, is, in the future, every farm wants to be a solar farm, you know what I mean? So we need to, we need to do the math and determine how much money we are, because remember when we sold a farm, a solar farm, it's for twenty, thirty years, you know? So, so we need to think, we need to think ahead that how it's going to be, it's great, you know, that we are producing solar energy and, you know, renewable energy, but also we need to, to also consider what is, if they don't pay any taxes or property taxes or how that impacts local municipalities or, you know?
Yep.
So, yeah.
Nope, you're correct. It is exempt, so there is no tax coming in, in real estate tax. Like I said, I don't know the impact of the other, how they calculate the other fee. I've asked a variety of people at revenue, and I, I still can't get a grasp, grasp on it. And so it is, and it's not a short term. Like you said, it's twenty-five years, and they can renew their lease after that timeframe. So it could be there for fifty years. In the heart, you know, the city might grow up around it, and here you have a solar farm right in the middle of the city. So that's, that's things that we need to, you know, as an organization, we need to think through the impact of that.
From the sound, the sound of it though, that you are working with the Department of Revenue, I believe, to, to, to come up with that...
Correct.
Fee and, and that calculation.
Yes, they calculate the, it'll be a, I think that actually might be LGS that actually calculates that fee, but I don't know how. You know, I've been trying to piece that together and it, I'm not getting all the answers that I know. And solar farms are relatively new, solar projects. I did work with Revenue and MG&E, and we did a video. So their, the Department of Revenue is putting this together now. We met out on the, on the project and created this so that other assessors will know how to value these. And also, so MG&E may, or utility companies can also look at this and know, hey, we need to fill out these forms, you need to tell the assessor this information. Otherwise, you could be considered commercial. So if you don't do that and you don't turn that in. But a lot of it, you know, the manual, which I was reading and trying to figure out how to handle this, it wasn't quite specific enough in a lot of areas, and that's why I had to work with Revenue and MG&E to make sure we had all of the forms, everything organized and done properly. And that, because we don't want, I don't want another court case where we don't need that for something that would qualify and that. So there is though, the, all of that land that became exempt does qualify for the conversion charge, okay? Egg use conversion charge. So all of those acres, that is calculated and submitted as a conversion fee because it's no longer used as agriculture, and it's been pulled out of that class. So, so that did generate a pretty nice amount of a conversion fee for that amount of acres.
And how often is that conversion fee? It's only a one-time?
It's just a one-time fee.
Correct, okay.
Yep, it's a one-time fee and because they've removed it from egg use. And that's only if it's egg use that they would get that. If it was classified as commercial, then we wouldn't value, they wouldn't get that conversion fee if it was swamp or waste land. They don't get that conversion fee. It's only if it was used as egg and is pulled out of agriculture.
Okay. Alder Roda-Frada, you have another question?
Yes, so now moving on to dark store, the loophole. So how many of, do we have any litigation right now with the city? Any of these big store?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Dark store loophole, you know? So we have any?
Litigation?
Litigation currently?
We don't have anything that's really falling under the dark store litigation now. But there have been a lot of really awesome court cases, as I say, in favor of assessors and valuing their properties correctly. We do have more and more, more and more tends to be commercial properties that on our end, they're not participating upfront. You know, they're not giving us the income and expense so that we can make sure that value is correct. They're not giving us lease information so that we understand what's happening and that. So we have, and more of them that, one thing we found this year on a whole variety of parcels that people came in and objected at board, they did not participate in open book or anything, and they didn't fill their forms out correctly or accurately. Certain parcels, we know they're for sale. I'm, I'm aware of a pending offer on one. And, you know, on the form, it says, you know, is this property for sale? They put no. Is this property currently listed? No. Is this property any pending sale? They put no. So the board this year chose to not allow them a hearing and, and on an incomplete form. I don't know what will occur because of that, because they, people have other rights and pending actions, so... But we, I don't believe we should just be waiving things automatically to court, you know, at board. I, I think in my mind, we should be asking more questions and getting that information. So this year, our board review was longer. We had three dates and overlapped almost three months. We had our initial board date. And then at that, because we had a variety of commercial that we didn't have all of the information that we really need to defend that value, and so we issued subpoenas or requested the board. So as the assessor, I cannot, I can't subpoena information ahead of time. The only, I can request the board review to subpoena that information. And, and so that's what we've been doing, requesting the board to issue a subpoena to provide us, that property owner provide us this information. And then that information might shed more light on the value where we choose to stipulate and ask the board to change the value based on this new information. Or in other cases, we've had people trying to quash those subpoenas and say, no, we're not going to fulfill it and, and that the board has no right to do that. But they do have that right to subpoena that information and that. So our boards have been taking much longer than what they used to take. It used to be, you know, you were done by noon the day of. It started at nine and you were done by noon, and you might have zero to three board review. But by bringing those values up the way we did in 2020, that's caused a lot more of the court cases and things like that.
I, I'm guessing our city attorney would be involved or, or an attorney for the city would be involved when you're, when you're speaking about subpoenas, not my words, not honoring or squashing?
Correct.
Okay.
So, like I said, at the point of border review, I become the defendant as the city assessor, and our city attorney represents the board at that time. Well, they cannot represent both the board and I at that time. And so that's why we have a separate attorney, Attorney Seibel is working with me...
Sure.
As the process. And I don't think the city could find a better attorney to do that. You know, she has been winning these court cases in circuit court extensively, and so she, she thoroughly understands the assessment process and those laws behind that.
Oh, good. And as far as the process, I mean, you, you mentioned earlier that some have just been skipping the open book? I mean, is, is there some logic to, to start out and just move in a direction? I mean, is there an advantage just to skip or they just, people are just...
Most property owners, residential property owners or egg property owners, they come and talk to us.
Sure.
But a lot of times, some of these court cases are occurring or board cases are occurring because you have, it's not always the owner of that real estate that's initiating it. They have people reaching out to them, these tax reps who reach out to them. It doesn't, a lot of times, it doesn't cost them anything to do this upfront. And, and so they're like, why not? And then you have the tax reps filling out the paper. They say they're the agent for them. And so I, I'm, I'm pretty much a stickler. I will make sure that those agent auth forms are complete before I even will talk to anyone about a property. I might talk basic information, but the commercial has so much confidential information that I'm not going to talk to anyone unless I have an agent authorization form in front of me for them.
I guess what I would encourage, or at least the residents out there that may be watching, and if they have some questions regarding their assessment, start with the open book.
Correct.
And then, and then move through that process if, if they feel it's, well, in their mind unjust. So, I mean, you would agree with that?
Oh, yes, definitely. Open book is always the better process.
Right.
And especially on a lot of these properties, it's like you don't even have to wait to open book. If you think your property isn't assessed accurately right now, then call us up, and we can do an owner request for review, we can look at it upfront. If you think, you know, when I first started here, I had a, I literally was here like a month when they had open book. And, and I had, a variety of people came in for two condo complexes that didn't think it was equitable between their complexes. So I just said, well, at this point, you know, I wasn't the one who technically set the value because I had just started, but I said I can put it into my workload for next year and do full walkthroughs and look at it. And, and they were right, they were not equitable, and we made everything equitable. I think there, like in the one condo complex, I think it was like a difference of forty thousand dollars in assessments between the highest and lowest, and they're almost identical. By the time it was done, it was like four thousand dollars between the highest and lowest, and that had to do with depreciation of the years that they were built. And one had a fireplace, and it was the only one that did not have a fireplace. depreciation of the years that they were built. And one had a fireplace and it was the only one that did not have a fireplace. So you could just go right through and tell exactly how much better that value became by doing that. So at any point in time, property owners can contact us and depending on where we are in the cycle, we can add that into our workload to look at and review.
Good, all right. Yes, I see a couple of hands. Alder Gerhart?
Thank you. So I have kind of a specific question and I think it's actually related to agriculture versus agricultural forest taxable or property classes. This came up kind of randomly in a, in a committee meeting. We were talking about tree policy and a property owner happened to be there test defending something else. And he mentioned that on his property, he has a grove of, he's an agriculture property, has a grove of trees and it actually would significantly reduce his taxes to just cut down, like clear cut this grove of trees would actually reduce his taxes. And there's sort of this perverse incentive to actually get rid of tree cover. I was just curious if you could maybe shed some light on that, if you, if you have a sense of what that, that situation could be?
Yep, nope, you're, I guess I'd say yes and no to that question. So so I know, I know exactly kind of the thought process you're going. If they had all egg land and let's say forty acres and thirty acres is egg and ten acres is a forest, that, because that forest is adjacent to the egg land, that forest is required to be assessed at full market of wood. But then it's fifty percent of that because it's egg forest. Where forest, if that forest was adjacent to a commercial property or something and didn't touch egg land itself, tillable land, that doesn't get that fifty percent. It's just at full value. Now, egg land itself is based on egg use. So it's not assessed at market value. That egg land might sell for fourteen thousand an acre. But it's only assessed at three hundred dollars per acre. So egg land is significantly lower than what the market value is on that. So that's why they get preferential treatment so that we maintain egg land. The egg forest, if they cut that down and started tilling it, then they would get egg use. So that would end up becoming a lower value. But that egg, that forest is, was, I think, was at full value when we revalued, nine thousand, I think it was nine thousand four hundred an acre. So if it's egg use, they're at forty thousand seven hundred an acre. Versus like an egg site where the home site is, that's like forty thousand an acre. So it's, it's not, it's one of the lowest values that you can have for land, for woods. And that's, that's that property owner's decision to do that if they choose. On our end, we're required by the law to value that at the market value. And that egg, egg forest, if it's got the egg in front of it, that's fifty percent of market value. Swamp, waste, those undeveloped classes, they're also valued at fifty percent of market value. And that's based on law. And then egg land, the tillable, the crop land, that gets that egg use, that preferential treatment or preferential value, if that makes sense.
Just to follow up on that word you, you mentioned as far as law, I mean, all of this is based on state law, state statutes.
Correct.
It's not something that the city of Fishburg has, in this body has implemented, correct? Okay.
Correct. We, we, we look at all of those values based on sales and how do I say it? We, we like break apart those sales, I guess you'd say. So that's part of what I did in equalization. So it clicks in my head, but I don't know if it always clicks in a lot of assessors' heads because they didn't do that as a process probably before. But you basically take that forty acres, like I said, and when I worked in equalization, we will look at peer sales first. So if you had forty acres of nothing but tillable land, that's the best sale you can get. Because then you just take the sale price divided by forty and that's the dollar value. So you'd always start with your peer sales to develop what that egg is or that swamp. You know, when I had Green Lake or Marquette counties, you know, they had a lot of swamp land. So then you would develop what that swamp value is or your waste value based on those peer sales. And then you'd go to the parcels that might have two classes on swamp and egg. And then you'd say, okay, I'm starting off and my egg is coming in at twelve thousand an acre and my swamp at three thousand an acre. So then you start with those prices and see if that equals. And we'd always say farmers know what they're buying and how much it is. And it, it, those values come real, real nicely. A lot of times if you have something really of an outlier, it tends to be that someone bought egg land to build promega hoop houses and that, you know, because that was egg land. So it's being purchased at a commercial value, not purchased at an agricultural value that a farmer is buying that for to continue to till that land.
Alder Gerhart, did I cut you off? I'm sorry if I did.
Oh, not at all.
You had a follow up question?
I actually do have some follow up questions, but I think I maybe just gave Amy a call. But I just wanted to kind of bring it up as a, since I didn't realize there was a difference between agricultural and egg forest when you talked about those property classes. But I will probably follow up with you, Amy, to kind of dig into that a little bit more, if you don't mind.
Yep, nope, nope, I don't mind at all.
We are nearing the hour. Are there additional questions before we adjourn? I don't see any. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Alder Aratafara, and see your hand.
Another question that, you know, some people ask me and is how do we assess, do the quarry pay property taxes?
How do we assess?
Oh, oh, is it quarry, you know?
Oh, quarry?
Yeah, do they pay property taxes and how do you assess those?
Okay.
It's similar to, they have some exemption too or?
Yep, quarries, no. So some quarries are considered manufacturing. And the state will take certain quarries and consider manufacturing and they will value those. Other quarries, the state does not take because there might be other classes. So blanking on a name, is it Mant? On, yeah, on Double M, yep. That the state does not assess. We assess locally. Because there's a couple residential houses on there. So on those parcels, we have to classify kind of each piece according to the class. So the properties that are used as residential, the couple houses, those are valued and that land underneath them is valued as residential. So we create a land record for those buildings on the residential. Then the buildings behind where they're running their business, that we're classifying as commercial land. And then I actually create a land of value for the quarry. So when we revalued for 2020, they didn't have a special land value for that. So I actually use the land value the state is using on their manufacturing because the state didn't take that parcel because of the other classes. It isn't primarily all manufacturing. And so they don't like to take it if it's a mixed class like that. Or has mixed uses, I guess, and doesn't all qualify. So I use their rate for that land value of the quarry to develop that area that's being quarried to use that rate, if that makes sense.
Okay. Additional questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation, Amy.
Okay, thank you.
And is the PowerPoint something that we, you can share with us?
Sure.
Okay, if you'll send it out to all of us.
Sure.
We would appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you again. Very, very informative and very helpful for us.
Okay, good. And if you ever have questions, you know where I am, so.
Yes.
I like to answer the questions that, you know, I, I really believe in transparency and you know, the educating of the public and our council to understand what we do.
Oh, very good. Thank you again.
Can I add something finally? If you go to the, to the assessor website, in the website of the city, go to the page, they have a lot of maps, a lot of good information, so.
Yeah, we do. We have a lot. And I have some graphs on there and things and what do we call them this year? Our, our annual reports that we did for each department, I have that posted on our website also. I put some graphs in there that show kind of when they started using the Kama system and how much like our workload has increased, what we view, what we do. So they have some different statistics in, in a different manner too.
Good, a lot of valuable information.
Yep.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda this evening, announcements. The next committee of the whole meeting will be September twenty-second, 2021. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned officially at nine oh five PM. Thank you.